Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Chambers. It is Monday, June 11th at 7:06 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemmons.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Presidents.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Eight, present. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of May 21st, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, I presented, Mary, the recording clerk, my copy for a moment just to point out a couple of things that were, let's just say, out of order. Couple corrections. First of all, on page two, right at the top, third line that says Town Manager.
Uh huh.
If you read the sentence through, I'd like to remove ing.
On the open.
Of hardworking.
Where is this in?
Should read Town Manager, blah, 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 for the service to this community and their hardworking and putting together the budget. I'd like to remove ing and just make it hard work, separate words.
Yep.
Then over on page three, a little more than halfway down, paragraph starts Counselor Carrasco, second line down, Counselor Clemmons confirmed, remove the word "that," replace with "and," stated that they are able to add two dispatchers. I had one question, I didn't see this until late today, but near the end, there's a paragraph that starts, Counselor Steves asked if there is any information from Senator Fatman on additional funds. While I think people that were in attendance at that subcommittee meeting understood that State Senator Fatman was going to be looking at a particular bill, it would be nice if that were elaborated upon, but it's not necessary, I just want to point it out. Next page over, first paragraph at the top, fifth line down, Dr. Valar said that actually, that is not the correct word there. Dr. Valar said they actually need.
Page four, okay. Much further.
And I'm sorry for these usage-type corrections, I should have caught them electronically. Next paragraph down, Counselor Steve said, down to the next line, Dr. Valar, that he learned? Said, insert, please. So insert "said" next to Dr. Valar. Then over to page five, second paragraph, Counselor Nash, fifth line down, sorry, fourth line down, cuts were made due to inaction on the community. I'd like that to say "in the community" perhaps, instead of "on." And I believe that's all that I had in that particular. That was a very long set of minutes and it was very comprehensive, just a couple of little catches there, thank you.
Counselor, oops, Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, on page number three, where it says Counselor Manna was curious as to why the DPW budget wasn't higher, I was referring to the DPW snow and ice, and I believe I stated that, so if we could just like insert "snow and ice" on there too. Even though it says it at the end, it just doesn't give that apparentness in the beginning.
Oh, okay, okay. Good point.
All right. Counselor Steves?
Yeah, I have a couple of points in here, and you notice in the comments, all of the highlighted ones are mine. So like, I had a question, a couple of, I put in brackets here for questions that needed to be followed up on, like specifically on page three, the first bracket says, that says I wasn't sure exactly what Ron was saying, because it mentions here that you explained throughout the year that they typically lose police officers, but I didn't recall you saying that, so.
I did, no. What I was referring to is that in the middle of the year, the salary lines changed because an officer might retire or leave to go to another position.
Okay.
And that's what that was supposed to be reflected.
For retirements and stuff like that, okay.
So through retirement and other.
Yep. Could be for any reason they leave, and that kind of changes their budget from regular overtime to a regular payroll to overtime because of the changes of that.
Okay. And also, there was a, just to point it out here for agenda item number 12, our original minute said 100,000, but the agenda actually said 200,000, and it's been 200,000 for a couple of years now.
Which page?
Huh?
Page seven?
It's page seven, Agenda Item Number 12. The minutes originally said 100,000, but I had caught it because the agenda said 200,000, and we voted to make it 200,000 a couple of years ago.
So you're correct.
Yeah. And that was, that was it, other than the things that are already marked in here, so.
Okay. Anyone else with corrections, additions, deletions? Synonym? All those in favor?
As amended.
As amended, excuse me, yes. Okay, synonymus eight. Consider and accept the special Town Council meeting minutes of May 23rd, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Same questions? I see some comments are highlighted.
Yep.
Anything else? You okay, Counselor Nash?
This is a real quick one. Thank you, Madam Chair. Back page, page four, a little above, halfway down, above the bolded vote by roll call, where it says Counselor Nash stated that he felt it was ludicrous, should say "to" after, not "o."
Yeah.
And I don't mind if the word ridiculous is also added, but I won't ask that it be included.
Counselor Manna, sir.
I'm cited in here, but my name isn't on here as attending, so I just want my name on here as attending, please.
That's a good point.
Ooh, good catch.
That's true.
We have not done remote participation. Anyone else? Anything else? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Synonymus eight. Agenda item number five, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of June 4th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on those. Actually, if you could, on page three, at the very bottom, second paragraph from the bottom, Chair McClemmons noted that firefighter Wareka, his name is W-A-R-A-I-K-A. All right? Somebody else?
No.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah, thanks. I did have another one of those bracket questions here, because I thought it's on page seven, it's the second highlight down, it says Counselor DePietro would rather see the line item I like, I thought Esteban said that, actually. I could be wrong, because I think maybe both of you said it at one time or another, but I'm pretty sure that you said it at some point.
I think there was a bunch of us that said it.
I think at one time or another, yeah.
Counselor Nash said it, Mr. DePietro said it, Counselor Clemmons said it at one point at the same time, so I think it was multiple.
So I suppose it doesn't really matter, then.
Which is fine, I mean, it's okay.
Many counselors said, no.
Yeah, it's okay.
They would like to see that.
But I did say that, the whole, it is, the line is correct, I wanted to make sure that the 50,000 stayed in the whole park.
Right.
There were several counselors that agreed.
Right. So either, whatever you want to, that sounds fine, several counselors agree. Counselor Manna?
On page four, Agenda Item 12, where it's read, move to end discussion, Counselor Nash, should that read, move to end the question, not the discussion, or?
I can clarify that. I asked for the vote results to be moved to the end of that paragraph where they should be, because they initially were right below the Agenda Item.
Oh, okay.
That's all that means.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How we doing? Everybody's okay?
No, and there's one more, one more item, ma'am. Agenda item number 20, I had a note here saying, please check this.
Page eight.
I'm sorry, page eight, page eight, Agenda Item Number 20, because it originally said that Director Blakely explained that this, that this items that dictate prevailing wage, which didn't make any sense, but as I remembered it, she was talking about how Whitewater employees are covered by prevailing wage laws and had done some extra overtime, if I'm correctly, if I'm remembering it correctly. So I don't remember.
Counselor Steve asked for clarification, and DPW explained that this came up because Whitewater employees are covered by prevailing wage laws, had done some extra overtime. Heather, is that right, the way it's read? It reads?
Because the original, the original line didn't make sense, so.
Well, it was a transfer 45 from water legal to water prevailing wage, and.
It's, it's because they, we have, when they do prevailing wage work, we have to pay them a differential over their normal base.
Okay, okay.
Different, okay. That makes more sense?
Okay.
It was a differential over the prevailing wage.
Okay, so it was an overtime, okay, okay.
So it's differential.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, on page seven, we'll go one, two, three, four, five, where it says Counselor DePietro, and then it's highlighted, I think Carrasco said this, question mark, question mark?
Oh, that was.
We just did, we just discussed that.
We'd clarify that.
Oh, you did?
Yes, that's where Counselor Carrasco mentioned it, but a lot of counselors agreed with him, so she was gonna.
I apologize, I was reading, I didn't hear you.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so that the public's aware, these are quite extensive minutes, because they stem from the public hearing on the water and sewer rates, and then the capital budget, so.
Right.
There was a lot, and there were many corrections submitted previously, and we weren't looking for clarification, we just want people to know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So yes, we have 11 pages here, so. Counselor Carrasco?
I just want to say thank you to the recording clerk, because this was a long meeting, and I know we're going through these corrections, but you have not an easy task, thank you.
Absolutely.
And because we've had back-to-back meetings, it's been a little more difficult to get them back to you, to get them back corrected, so we understand that the plan that's been working, not quite working when you have week after week meetings, so timing is. Counselor Manna?
For Counselors, one, I also did congratulate the graduates of Southbridge, but also Bay Path, too, and I want that to reflect that, because I did mention Bay Path specifically.
And Bay Path. It's on page 10.
Yes, page 10.
Okay. Thank you for the page numbers. All right, are we all good on this?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor as amended? Synonymus? All right. Very good, moving on. Agenda item number seven, Subcommittee summaries, relevant minutes to be read at each Agenda Item. A is general government, Counselor Steve. Oops.
Miss, number six.
Oh. Oh, I'm, oh, just sorry. I thought I, yeah, that's interesting, I had an eight. Okay, Agenda Item Six, consider and accept the special Town Council meeting minutes of June 5th, 2018.
So moved.
Okay. That's short.
Third.
Any, oh, sorry.
Just abstaining, I was not present.
Great, okay. I was thinking of their corrections, there's nothing there.
No.
All right, we're good? All those in favor? Seven, abstain is two. All right. Great. Now we can move on. Agenda, thanks for pointing that out. Agenda Item Seven, Subcommittee summaries, A is general government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I haven't had a meeting recently, however, I do have one coming up on Wednesday at 6:00, and there's a whole bunch of stuff on it, and I don't have the agenda immediately in front of me, but, so we're talking about, let's see, a grant to buy a John Deere loader, and I'm not quite sure why that's on mine, but, because it's a capital item, I guess. Town depart, a bylaw on revolving funds, discussing the audit, and possibly other things that time permits. And that's at 6:00 in the Veterans Room.
So Wednesday, June 13th, 6:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. Agenda Item 7B is Department of Public Works, that's Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Department of Public Works had a Subcommittee meeting on June 5th of this year. There were eight Agenda Items, all of which either regarded the request or transfer of funds. It was pretty general, in essence, we, I didn't have one Agenda Item that was not unanimously voted on. The majority, if not all, of the items, I believe, are on Counselor's Agenda for this evening, but certainly to be paid attention to, the sum total is, for the items on this particular meeting, come to $1,688,150.46. And I'd be happy to discuss any of the above, but I'm sure Heather would be able to elaborate on these more than I could. And we have no meeting scheduled at this time for Department of Public Works. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, just to clarify, I actually took the minutes for that, and I haven't had time to type them up yet, so I will try to, try to read my chicken scratch when we get to the Agenda Items.
Thank you, and thank you for filling in for Secretary, you've done that a number of times on committees. Agenda Item 7C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, no meeting minutes to report, we're caught up, I believe, and no meetings currently scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. 7D, Planning and Development, Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, I do not have any minutes, since we haven't had any recent meetings since our last council meeting, and I do have a meeting scheduled preceding the Joint Planning Board and Council meeting on Wednesday, June 20th, at 5:30 PM, and the meeting for that is to go over two peer review service agreements for the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you. And 7E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a meeting scheduled. Originally, it was scheduled for June 14th, but that has been changed to June 13th at 7:00 PM for PPP, or immediately following the general government meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, so move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Chairman's Announcements. I don't have too much tonight, just a couple of meeting things we discussed a little bit. I will be posting tomorrow Council of the Whole for Thursday for the eval process, and I believe that will probably be about 6:30, we're just up in the air on that slightly, and then after that, there will be a special meeting to address solar issues that the manager has requested, and that will be a special Town Council meeting. And we will just, I believe that'll be 7:00 or 7:30, depending on what we determine by tomorrow, and what gets posted. Counselor Manna?
I'm gonna ask the excuse, because the reason I changed the 13th is because I couldn't be here on the 14th, so I apologize.
We've had the eval mentioned for weeks on the 14th. But that's okay. Okay, anybody else? All right, so we'll get onto that. I just want to point out Debbie Arshenball, who works here in the Town Hall, who has worked here forever and ever, it seems, 40 years, will be retiring, will be retiring towards the end of the month, and I just wanted to wish her well on that retirement. Would have liked to have her come up and see us all, but she knows she's done great work for us, she's been here all this time, and she has declined the camera, but that doesn't mean that we can't still honor her for her service, that's just really a testament to, to the loyalty of the employees we have here. We have many long employees, and 40 years goes beyond what any of us could probably imagine in one career, so thank you for your service, and I think everybody feels the same, and I hope that we all get a chance to wish her well before she leaves. And that's it on that one. And other than that, I think, did you remember the Cops and Kids Golf Tournament, as we keep saying every week, is coming up on the 22nd at Heritage Golf Course, there are still some openings, you can find more information by contacting Deputy Chief Dinghy at the police station, or by going online, looking at the Facebook pages for the Cops and Kids or the police website. There are some foursomes still available, to my knowledge, and it's gonna be a great day for a great cause, and hopefully you can participate in one way or the other. Just pray for good weather for everybody. And we do have, we will talk more about handball, so I won't make that announcement as to when those clinics are, because we have that presentation this evening. And I think that's it. I always forget something, but thank you. And we'll move on to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First, I, you know, I want to express the Town Council, I apologize, is, we're trying to close up some matters before this Town Council leaves and the new Town Council is put in place, so you may see some push to get some things done, because obviously we want the people who have experience on issues to be able to talk about those issues versus potentially new people, so we are gonna be dealing, you are all familiar with the Mealing contracts that we approved some time ago, there's some, gonna be some adjustments Thursday night, so it's important that we have experienced people on that discussion, so that's the purpose of that, and I thank the Chairwoman for adding it to the agenda. I also want to thank Debbie, Debbie's been a longtime employee, as the Council Chair said, and she's sort of the jack of all trades, you know, if you need her in another department to help out, she's willing to go to the accounting department, or Town Clerk's Office, whatever it is. So it's really nice when you have an employee who's willing to work in any department and to help you in any way possible, she's dedicated, she comes to work with a great attitude every day. She's been tremendous in working with the CDVG grant in the Economic Development Office, so I want to as well wish her a very happy retirement, we are gonna miss her, not just me, but all the employees in Town Hall, she's a tremendous asset, so I wish her the most happiness possible when you actually retire and enjoy life. A couple of quick announcements, and these are both from Whitewater, which is the vendor that runs our water system, and I'm gonna read them. It's an immediate release, annual valve exercising, Southbridge, Charleston, Southbridge Water Department will start its annual valve exercising program on Monday, June 11, 2018, at approximately 7:00 AM, and continuing for approximately six to eight weeks. Exercising will start in the Old Sturbridge Road area and continue west and north through town. Due to the exercising, there may be some pressure loss and discoloration of water. Customers are advised to check the valve before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals, this will clear after a brief run of water at the tap. It's not dangerous if you see your water brown, just let it run for a little while and it'll go away. Another announcement, again from Whitewater, immediate, Southbridge Water Department will be installing a new water main in the vicinity of Main Street at the bridge near the Empire Buffet. This may interrupt the water service, and we will be hand-delivering notices to the customers affected by this. Please be aware that you may notice some pressure loss and discoloration due to this interruption. This will begin on Monday, June 18th, 2018, at approximately 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and continue through June 20th, 2018. Customers are advised to check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals, this will clear after a brief run of the water at the tap. My only other comment, just to let the Town Council know, is people have read in the newspaper, the town has asked for a restraining order to continue curbside collection, there will be, the beginning of the court case will occur tomorrow at 1:00 in the Worcester courthouse, I'm not gonna get any more detail than that, but that is the court proceeding, and it's, obviously, it's open to the public if anyone wants to attend, but it is to get the restraining order to make sure curbside collection continues after the landfill closes. And that's all I have, Madam Chairwoman, but I have a question.
Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you, to the Town Manager, what courthouse in Worcester? Worcester Superior Court, Worcester, there's several courts.
Worcester Superior Court.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have Agenda Item Number 10, is swearing in and presentations, and this evening, we are very lucky to have a presentation that the community should be very interested in. It is going to be by Nancy Ortiz. Welcome, thank you for coming this evening, and it'll be in regard to handball at the Edgar McMahon Field, most of us know this as Henry Street Field, and if you haven't had the opportunity of going there lately, you really should. As you know, last meeting, we voted to get those, use some funds to get the basketball courts taken care of and all, and the Ortiz's have been very, Nancy and her husband William have been very instrumental in bringing handball to our community, we heard from them last year, and we are lucky to find out more this year in the clinics that are coming up, so I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for being here with us this evening.
Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, and everybody else, I'm very flattered to come here tonight to tell you about our handball program, and how handball's gonna take off in Southbridge, my hometown. I grew up here, I grew up on Cross Street, and I'm a graduate of Southbridge High School, so these are my roots, this is where I was raised. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about handball, and what is special about what we do. I'm a handball player, as well as my husband, and we promote the sport of handball. We teach people how to play, we are advocates for the sport, and we are activists in Park Stewart's. We're not just concentrate on the sport of handball, we concentrate on the entire park. As you see on the top, that's Green Hill Park in Worcester, and we were behind the design of the park, right now we're working on fencing all the way around. So on the top, those are teachers from the Worcester Public Schools, that I did a teacher clinic with the gym teachers, middle school and high school, back in October, so that they could implement the handball curriculum, and in the bottom is a youth handball tournament that I did in Camp Street, Cambridge Street, where you drive by close to Rotman's, and that's the, another court. So I take care of a lot of courts in different parts of New England. Why handball? And that's the court that we built back in July, August of 2017. It's an affordable sport, it's the oldest sport with using a ball in a wall, it goes back to ancient Egypt. It's fun and challenging, and I know two counselors here got to see my husband and I in action last week, and you got to get the feel of the moving wall, you have to move around, and it's challenging, it's great for all ages, it's a great cross trainer, and it's a soft run sport. You could just show up with a ball and just start hitting the ball against the wall and have a good time. What are the benefits of handball for Southbridge? Would the residents benefit from it? And my answer to that question is absolutely. Why? Because in addition to basketball and baseball that is played in that particular spot, handball would be a great addition, recreation, and something fun to do with friends. The youth, and even adults, even family can play together and develop long-lasting friendships, and it's something that you don't stop playing when you're 13, it's something you continue to play till you're an adult. And residents who live in cross proximity of McCain Memorial Field will benefit from it, or anybody that lives in different spots in Southbridge, and it's positive. And you see some youth there that couldn't wait for us to do the lines, and they're already gravitated, they were inquiring and curious about the sport, and we just let them play, have some fun. What does a regulation outdoor one-wall handball court looks like? If you see on the left, that's Rivera Used Handball Courts in Waterbury, Connecticut, that's one wall, it has two sides, front and back, and the one on the right, I worked very hard for eight years to make sure it's on the master plan in Worcester, and that's the newest handball courts in Crompton Park, and that's my baby right there, it's gonna be two years old in September of this year, 2018, and that's, that was my handball tournament, September 9th, 2016. And in that particular court, you also play at, in the evening, so sometimes the lights are on on Friday and Saturday, so there are people that show up and play, you know, and it's off at 9:30. So it's something positive to do for the neighborhood. These are the one-wall handball dimensions, the current wall, Henry Street, is 12 feet, ideally is supposed to be 16 by 20, and we made it out of wood as an introductory handball wall to introduce the sport of outdoor one-wall handball to Southbridge. And I like the particular spot, because you need at least 15 feet of lateral running space, so you could run side to side, players run off the court, just like when you play tennis, and you need at least 20 feet of running space back, so you could retrieve the long shots and make it to the wall. And handball courts should be fenced, so I'm hoping that we could get some fencing around the perimeter to deal with the foot traffic and the bikes that run across when people are on the court. This is McCain Memorial Field, we were eyeing this spot before we spoke with the Town Manager in Stephen Rowensfeld. I was looking around, I said, what would be an ideal place? And it was an empty space, so I grew up, you know, going to Henry Street at times on the weekends with some of my friends, or just by myself, and I noticed the basketball court was taken out, there's nothing there, and I said, why not repurpose the space for an outdoor one-wall handball court? Currently, there are two baseball fields, it's playground basketball, and this is a nice, visible spot, because cars drive right in, and there's a lot of foot traffic, so, you know, it fills up, especially when school's gonna be out in about a week and a half from now. So it'd be great to see a lot of youth and adults, because when we were building this court, we saw a lot of people coming through, curious about what we're doing over there. And this is when we first met, back in August of 2016, to discuss our handball court proposal, and it went through the proper channels, of course, I got the permit, and we set a timeline to complete the handball court. I got the permit, and we set a timeline to complete the handball court. And this is how we started. I paid for the fence post, and four of them were put on the ground to build a 12 by 20 handball wall. Mark Hurley and his crew worked very hard to dig up all that dirt and put tons and tons of cement in there to make sure it's nice and stable and beyond the frost line. July 2017, we got to work. We built it in one day. The fence posts were there for about week and, week and a half to cure it before installing, and we put the pieces of plywood up there, one piece at a time, to make sure it's nice and flush against the floor. It's almost finished. I was celebrating, got one more piece of plywood to go, and the wall looked awesome. And many hours were spent because you have to prep the floors up. It's asphalt. It's been there over 40 some years, so it has a lot of uneven surfaces. So we're planning to, I'm planning to buy recreational resurfacing paint for the interior, you know, to take care of the bird bath and the uneven surfaces there. And that's how we did. We filled in the cracks on the side. We painted the wall, primed it, so that when it rains, it's well taken care of. We painted the handball lines. The kids couldn't wait. They're on the court. We said, okay, just fine, just play, have some fun, because they, we, they saw us playing, and they were curious about, what are you doing? What is this thing? Finished. And the advantage of this location, it has a lot of running space on the sides. And like I mentioned before, we need fencing around the perimeter, if it's just use some fence around, at least, you know, four to six feet. And this is the Southbridge Handball Tournament I organized and hosted back in September 19. It was a free event, and some of our local Southbridge players came, and other players from different cities and towns in New England came to, to support what William and I do for the sport. And they're having fun, very competitive. And not only that, the Tri-Community YMCA has two indoor handball courts there. So in the wintertime, I go in there. I'm a Y member in Southbridge, and I play four-wall handball with the small ball and the big ball. And that's where the sport of racquetball was invented, in a handball court. But we use their ball, they use our courts. And that's us doing a handball clinic through Community Night with Stephen Rowensfield. We did that in the spring of 2016, just having some fun, some youth, curious about, you know, what you do here. We're still going to work with Susan Cassini and with the executive director Glenn to make sure that the walls are well taken care of, the proper ventilation, and the floors are not slippery, so that we could get more people to use those courts since Sims was closed, so, and the courts in Worcester Y were removed in May 2016. So we need a place to relieve some stress and frustration and establish why it's the place to go. We also go to the conference center, too, to play some indoor four-wall handball. And that's us right there, and we're looking forward to growing handball players in Southbridge, and have you guys come on down and try it, too. It's not that bad. It's good.
Fantastic. So you have some clinics coming up?
I have some clinics coming up, beginning in June 26, at least, you know, four clinics, and then I show up and link people up. In order for this to take off, we really have to literally hold people's hands and say, hey, Lou, link up with this guy and this person, and, and like, really invite them, and do it in the afternoon or whenever is possible, so that the players that live around the Dudley, Webster, Southbridge area will link up and just, you know, play outdoors and, or play indoors. So they develop a nice rapport and get people to come and support one another.
Right. So you mentioned the 26th, July 3rd, July 10th, and July 17th, 3:30 to 4:30. You have information out there on the Southbridge Recreation website?
Yes.
So people go to the Town of Southbridge site, you can, you can find more information. That you mentioned here that any skill level, including beginners, ages 10 to 18, with 12 participants maximum? Is that pretty much?
Yes.
Okay, that's on your program. And bring a water bottle and a positive attitude, and you guys will do the rest for me.
Yeah, that's right. We're, you know, the equipment that we're going to provide is proper eyewear, gloves, because I know, you know, people have tender hands, and they're going to have to harden their hands, but provide them with gloves, liners, and ball, and, you know, and some wa, and some water in case they forget and have some fun, for at least an hour. Might go a little bit over an hour, because once they try it, they want to continue playing.
Okay. Counselor Manin, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Ms. Ortiz. Thank you very much. That's, that seems so wonderful, what you've done down there. I think you answered my question, though, because I, I was confused. Is it actual hand?
Yeah, you use your hands.
Okay. It's actually, you use your hands to catch it. So you just throw in and catch it?
Oh, no, you don't catch it?
No?
Just dribble it down?
You don't catch it?
You smack that thing against the wall?
Oh, you just bat it?
You use your hands, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then you work on your side on.
Instead of a tennis racket?
Mm-hmm. It's all hands.
But if you were to go down there, you could use a tennis racket?
Yes, you can. Yeah, with a, you know, soft tennis ball. Now, I won't recommend a hard ball because it's made out of wood.
Yeah.
It's plywood, but it's good.
You, no, you're not going to, we do not want you using a tennis racket on the handball wall. Okay? Right. You, you want to, you use your hand and you-
I don't know. I'm new to this, so.
Okay, so, so just disregard-
Like, inside the Tri-Community YMCA, you could use a racket.
Right. So, yeah, racket, racquetball in the racket club, you know, in a contained environment, but this is an outdoor environment for handball.
It keeps you young.
Yeah.
Keeps you young.
Yes, anti-agey medicine. Plus, you got to do your cross training, work on your upper body, lower body, so this works you from head to toe, and you get a good sweat.
Because you're constantly moving.
It's a moving wall.
No, I get, I get that. But I was just confused, like, is it actual hand?
Yeah. Yeah, and you have to keep your eye on the ball, and your feet cannot be flat, just like when you're boxing. So if any of you ever tried boxing? No. Well, I like to box. I like to do that from time to time, smack people around. So it's fun to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we, Counselor Morales and I went to your clinic last year when you had your opening in the fall time, and it was really exciting to see. Everybody was just really having a great time. It certainly looked like a lot of exercise, because there was a lot of diving and moving and trying to get that ball that bounces back at you, Counselor Manin, so.
Yeah, it is fun. And not to forget, this is, the Irish immigrants brought this sport to New England, so it's been in New England longer than it's been in New York City. Okay, because the Fall River had a handball wall back in 1905, so they brought it from Ireland. And I know the number one four-wall handball player, and he lives in Braintree for now. His name is Killian Carroll. So, you know, we always know people face-to-face and get to meet them, not like an untouchable celebrity LeBron James or, or some other person. These people are touchable, and, you know, you could talk to them, and they come down when they can. So I'm hoping to do another tournament, and I have to announce it when, but for now, we're just going to get people to use the handball wall more.
Fantastic. And have you put the information on the cable site as well, the flyers? Do you know if they're posted on the cable website?
I'm not sure, but I'll make sure it gets done.
It suggests that, yeah. It's a great resource for people when they want to find things that are going on in Southbridge, is to get, go onto our cable access channel, and there's a scroll that talks about all the, shows the different events that are happening in Southbridge.
Yeah. And I'm hoping to link up with the Southbridge Physical Education teachers to see if there's a way that we can implement a handball curriculum into the, into the schools. It does basketball, 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 and all this stuff, and golf, and this and that, and, and baseball. I said, why not handball?
Yeah, exactly. Well, thank you very much for being here. Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Ortiz?
You're welcome.
Okay, well, again, thank you for giving us all this information, and everybody out there.
Yeah, anytime.
Okay. Then we're going to move on. Okay, Agenda Item Number 11 is Citizens Forum. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium and have five minutes, just stating your name and address. Anyone? Okay, no one's moving, so we're going to move on. Agenda Item Number 12. So, oh, before we get started, we're going to go through, there's quite a few appointments here. If it's okay with the council, there are a couple of them, namely, I'll mention them, 15, 16, 22, 23, 25, 26, and 28, 29, that are for the same board for the same period. And if it's okay with you, I would like to read them jointly and then take one motion. Unless you have an issue with anyone, we can certainly break it up, but it's a little quicker if we just combine the, the one motion with the two people. Next week, next, next meeting, you'll see a lot more appointments, auxiliary, and different things, so. All right. Number 12. Vote to confirm the appointment of Detective Evan Ginkos as Police Representative to the Commission on Disabilities for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, eight. Motion carries. Agenda 13. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Nai Lam as Parking Ticket Clerk for a one-year term effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. I'm also not going to comment on all of these. I just want to make it clear so everyone understands, these are all reappointments. These are people and volunteers who have been dedicated to the town for a number of years, who have provided their services free of charge on all these different boards and commissions. And I want to also say to people that are watching this show, if you're interested in getting involved in a board or commission, please let me know, and we can, see if we can add you to one of the positions that we have open. So I'm not going to comment on, on all the different ones, but these are people who are already currently serving on boards, and it's just a simple reappointment. Thank you.
I just want to add to that. So most of these, when they're on a board, if the chair of the board, if they're still interested in staying on the board, then the chair will re-recommend them. It's not to say that it's ever a given. I would like to point that out. Everyone is welcome to try to be on a board or, or not. You know, if you're, if you're interested, you can come forward, and then we would take that up into consideration. If we have others who would like to join a board, you have that opportunity as well. So it's just something. Also, you'll see here, there's, there's others. There's our, our legal firms and such. Those are also reappointments. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I don't want to be too, too long with this, but these are not all volunteers, Mr. Sanangelo. I was a registrar. That's a paid position. I'm sure there may be others here. I just want to make sure people are clear that the council is aware these aren't all volunteer positions. Thank you.
Right. So, right. So as you hear the, as you hear the descriptions, you'll get the idea. But again, if anybody ever wants to be a member on a board that already is full, it doesn't mean you can't be, and it's up to a future council to take up the decision whether to reappoint someone who already exists there, or whether they choose a new person. It's just not a given, and it has been changed in the past, so, equal opportunity.
And I guess, listen to what Counselor Nash says, I do want to point out that Item Number 13 is a stipend position. Item Number 14 is a stipend position as well.
There's, there's plenty. We've been doing it for, it's, it is something that we do routinely at the end of the year, so. All right, moving on. We were just at Nai Lam. Okay. Did we get it first and a second?
Yeah, we did.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous, eight. Motion carries. 14. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Evelyn Rivera as Municipal Hearing Office for a one-year term effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, eight. Motion carries. 15 and 16 are the same board. Vote to confirm the reappointment of A.J. Larachelle and Lori Denlevy each to the Scholarship Committee. Could we please have quiet in the back, please? We can, thank you. Okay. To the Scholarship Committee for a one-year term effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2019.
Correction, 2018.
July 1st. July 1st, oh, thank you. I read the top one. It was, okay. So the motion stays, July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these two? All in favor? Eight, unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. They were just having really good conversation in the back, which is not a problem, just a little noisy. Okay. Number 17. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Robert G. Caprera Esquire as Town Council for the Town of Southbridge for a one-year term effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a brief comment. All three of these are attorneys who work for the town, have provided great service to the community over the last three years, and we want to continue to work with them since they've done a great job in a number of legal issues.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous motion carries. On Agenda Number 18, this is clarification with Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC, as we use the entire firm, not just one. So this agenda item is vote to confirm the reappointment of Mead Tellerman and Costa LLC as Special Municipal Counsel for a one-year term effective immediately, effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just a question. Was this, was, was Adam J. Costa always a partner, or was he? I seem to recall that he was a lower-paid attorney that we had for, for just liquor licensing issues only.
Frankly, we're not using Mr. Costa. We're really only using Tellerman at this time. I think, I think actually Costa is a partner now, but it's, it's Jay Tellerman is doing our land use issues is really what Jay's working on.
Okay, I guess the only relevant portion of that is what, has the hourly rate increased?
No, it's the same hourly rate that we use for the other attorneys, so it's pretty standard rate.
I believe that they used to be a little bit lower than some of the other attorneys. There's different rates for each attorney.
Right. Rob has a certain rate. Rob Caprera's rate is a little bit lower than both Tellerman's and Merrick O'Connell. I believe, and I have to check, because I know that those two are the same, and I'm trying to recall off the top of my head, but I thought they were a buck 25, but I'd have to look to make sure. It's on my desk, if you want, I'll go check it at some point and give you the exact numbers.
If I might help you out. So this is why I, I was concerned about the names being listed, because we hire firms, not, not independents. And, and when we did the research back, I asked Avon to look back, too, and when these, both of these groups were originally brought in in 15 and wherever, it was brought in as the, as the group. So that's where the agenda changed on Monday. Also, the Mead Tellerman, I think to your point, I guess Costa used to be part of somebody else, and Tellerman was part, so now it's Mead Tellerman-Costa is what has it explained to me, too, so. But as far as the numbers, I know that we, Kevin, when Mr. Pagos was here, he looked into the cost of various legal firms, and we tried to get the numbers down, but that's the best I've got for more information.
Yeah, I would just, I would be hesitant if, if the hourly rate had gone up because of the, the difference in those designations. That's all.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, so the rates haven't changed from what they were. I have, the reason I have a sheet on my desk with each of the law firms, with the amounts, I just don't remember them off the top of my head, but we've made no changes to those legal fees since Kevin was here.
Okay, I'll, can you just send those to us?
I'd be happy to send them to you tomorrow. Yeah, I'll email them off to you guys tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steves.
It's not, it's not specifically here, but I was curious, what, I understand that
It's not specifically here, but I was curious. I understand that the planning board also uses Bobowski.
Not unless they're doing it through themselves, but the only firms we have are these. I haven't seen Bobowski being used. But again, I don't think they have any access to attorneys on their own. They're using just ours now.
Well, they would use... They would go through ours, yes.
So, I have not seen him here. The only one I've known that we've used, and we've used Tellerman for a couple of cases, one because there's a conflict of interest with Merrick O'Connell. But I have not seen, since I've been here, I have not seen Bobinski. I do... Yeah. I think that's the right way to say it, right?
Bobowski.
Have not seen him as of yet.
Could you just double-check?
I will.
Because I know that they have in the past, so I don't know if they still are.
Yep. Adam, I know that Adam Mead was doing, at one point, was doing liquor stuff back some time ago. But... And actually, he may be doing a little bit now, but they've had almost no work. So, if he's doing anything, it's very, very small.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Sorry, I didn't see all the hands at first. Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda nineteen, vote to confirm the reappointment of Merrick O'Connell as special counsel for a one-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Twenty, vote to confirm the reappointment of Michael Jake Trombley as Veterans Graves Officer for a one-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Twenty-one, vote to confirm the reappointment of Nai Lam... Naito Lam? I didn't think the "to" was in there. But Nai Lam as Assistant Collector for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steves?
I have a question. Why are we appointing this when she's an employee? Why are we appointing her when she's an employee?
Let me just read it again.
Is it something... Is it something statute?
This is obviously something that Southbridge has always done, if they put it up for a reappointment. But I don't know what the reasoning for why that is there, unless there's something in the bylaws or charter. But this is obviously, if it's a reappointment, it's been going on for many, many years. I'm just not sure just why.
Yeah, I don't either.
You know, usually when it's something like that, sometimes it's a charter question, and they have it specifically. I just don't know off the top of my head.
I don't know.
I can find out for you if you'd like us.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Next, two are together. Vote to confirm the reappointments of Leonard Vino and John Truffoni to the Southbridge Airport Commission, each for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Carrasco?
I just... I know we had talked about it previously, but I know that we've talked about staggering a lot of these... Staggering a lot of the appointments, and I believe, like, the Airport Commission, Board of Health, all those, which the ones that are coming up, I believe they're staggered, correct?
I believe so. Yeah, so there's five members here, so... Yes, yes.
Several years ago, they were all...
Because they were empty. I think at one point, they were down to two members and couldn't even have meetings or something, so...
I just want to make sure they're staggered, that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? It's unanimous, eight. Motion carries. For twenty-two and twenty-three. Twenty-four, vote to confirm the reappointment of Anthony Postal... Postal? Postal? Postal. Okay, thank you. To the Board... I didn't use my French. To the Board of Health for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since it's a Board of Health appointment, I'll take a moment just to say thank you to Mr. Pastali. I've gotten to know him a little bit, paid attention to what he's contributed to that board. I find him very, very smart, engaging, candid, and I'm glad to see that he is up for reappointment, and I hope that he accepts it. I assume that he is interested, otherwise his name wouldn't be here. And I looked for him in the audience tonight, and I see he's not able to attend. But glad to see Tony's back on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll just point out that each member was asked prior to their name coming forward, obviously, even though they might have been recommended by their chair. I know that Ms. Tortis has gone out to make sure that everybody wanted to be reappointed. So, it would be nice if we could just point people and drag them in.
Yeah, right. Glad to keep them.
No choice, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda items number twenty-five and twenty-six. Vote to confirm the reappointments of Kevin Cristo and John Sypek to the Board of Registars, each for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Steves?
Actually, to bring up Counselor Carrasco's point earlier, I mean, I think in this case, this is a three-person board, and that would mean a majority of them would be coming up at the same time. Should we stagger it? Should we change it a little bit?
That's a four-person board. The town clerk is a registrar.
That's true. But she's permanent, so...
Correct.
So, should we actually be changing this a little bit to stagger them, so that...
I think we're a little late on that at this moment.
Somebody gets three, somebody gets two years or something.
I think it's a little late tonight to think about it, but I think it's something to continue to strive for. Counselor Carrasco?
I think what I see here, there's not all members are here. So, there is some staggering. So, I think we would be okay to move forward with these two appointments.
May I point out one of the clarifications since I was a registrar? These are both Republican nominations. The way that it works for the registrars, each majority party, Democrat or Republican, can nominate individuals to serve on the boards of Board of Registrars. And in the case of the town clerk being with one particular party, the other party has two appointments. The town clerk being one party, appointment from that party is a single individual resident. So, I don't think staggering makes any difference in this particular case, because the parties will continually nominate their own members. And I can tell you, too, it's kind of hard to find people involved in those town committees. Thanks.
Okay. We all set with that? All those in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda twenty-seven, vote to confirm the reappointment of Christopher Brier to the Cable Advisory Committee for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion on...? All in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Eight. Twenty-eight and twenty-nine, vote to confirm the reappointments of Wendell Barthens... Brothmes? No, I... Thank you. And Natasha Nowick... Nowick to the Conservation Commission, each for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Discussion? Counselor Steves?
I'd just like to point out, actually, there's somebody else who is supposed to be up this year that isn't on this list as well. So, that means there's... Yeah, it's Michelle. Yvonne pointed out that she was trying to reach out to her, and for some reason, never got back in touch with her.
Well, that's why they're not here now, but there's obviously...
She'll arrive at the next meeting if that's the case.
Right.
Okay. All in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda item thirty, vote to confirm the reappointment of Thaddeus Dubsky as Constable for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Thirty-one, vote to confirm the reappointment of Helen Lenty to the Historical Commission for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just very quickly, I think that this name needs a little bit of recognition. Mrs. Lenty is a mainstay of this community, former town clerk, currently serves on the Bay Path School Committee, and she's just a wonderful individual. And I'm really pleased to see that she's choosing to remain active on the Historical Commission as well. Thanks very much to her for her continued service. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I was thinking when I read her name, and I know she's been on this for a long time, and instrumental in many ways to the community. So, I'd like to look up that data one of these days and see just how many years she's actually served. All right. All those in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Number thirty-two, vote to confirm the reappointment of Chad Splain to the Liquor Licensing Board for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Counselor's... I thought you had... Okay. All those in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Thirty-three, vote to confirm the reappointment of Paul Van Camp to the Southbridge Trails Committee for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Eight. Motion carries. Agenda item thirty-four, vote to confirm the reappointment of John Swenson to the Traffic Commission for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Agenda item thirty-five, vote to confirm the reappointment of Richard Clemmons to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Okay. I'll recuse myself on this. Not that I have to, but I will, and just won't take the vote with it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven and one abstent. One, not. Okay. Motion carries. Agenda item thirty-six, vote to appropriate... We're moving on now. This is meat. Vote to appropriate $1,688,150.45 from Water Retained Earnings to Water Stabilization Fund to transfer the remaining balance of the seven of the July first, two thousand and seventeen, certified retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on this topic? I know many of you are at subcommittee. Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to take a roll call on this. Counselor Eauclair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons? Yes. Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Eight yes. Motion carries. Agenda item thirty-seven, vote to approve the transfer of $63,000 from Town Council Reserve, $23,877 to Snow and Ice Overtime, and $39,123 to Snow and Ice Control to cover unanticipated costs for the FY two thousand and eighteen season.
So moved.
Second.
Discussions on this one? Counselor Steves?
Just one quick question. So, how much does that mean in total we spent on snow and ice this year? How much in total did we end up spending on snow and ice this year?
The original budget was $400,000, and so the sixty-three means it's $463,000.
Any other discussion? Oops, sorry. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just want to thank the DPW and those that have done this, because I know in years past, we've... Sixty-three thousand has not been the number we've transferred. We've transferred another $200,000. So, thank you for doing your due diligence and calling people in at the right time with an unpredicted winter all the time. So, thank you.
Any discussions? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Number thirty-eight, vote to approve the transfer of $5,000 from DPW Overtime to Cemetery Materials and Supplies for repairs to entrance gate on Oak Ridge Avenue.
Second.
Discussion? Just for the public, this will be something that will help to make the entrance gate that you come in from off of Everett Street much more secure and stable and aesthetically pleasing to all those who visit the cemetery for their loved ones, or just for... to walk around. Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Was this the item where this would cover the new granite posts?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Thirty-nine, vote to approve the transfer of $16,502.35 from DPW Overtime, $7,000, and water and sewer irrigation, $9,502.35, to general equipment, and repurpose $4,000 in general equipment allocated from Jersey Barrier Clamp to general equipment for the following items: a single-line stripe paint striper for $3,819, a ride-on mower for $7,084.35, and a ride-on blower for $9,599.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Motion carries. Just to point out, a lot of good subcommittee discussion on all of this, and there are plenty of minutes and information for those who may not know, but this was vetted quite heavily in subcommittee last week, I believe it was. Item forty, vote to approve the transfer of $5,000 from DPW Overtime to storm sewer and culverts.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Eight, unanimous. Motion carries. Item forty-one, vote to approve a transfer of $6,000 from Town Council Reserve to Recruitment and Processing to cover the unexpected additional costs of recruitment for FY two thousand and eighteen.
So moved.
Okay. Discussion on this one? Yeah. Let's see. Counselor Steves?
Just to clarify, so after this, how much does that mean we have left in Town Council Reserve?
So, let me read the whole thing, give you the details, because I wanted to get up to speed on this one myself today. So, there's a memo from Cheryl, Administrative Assistant in my office, to explain this. Recruitment and processing account, it's a memo to me, you have questioned a $6,000 transfer to the Recruitment and Processing account. This account is set up for any costs involved with the hiring of personnel. We've had to replace some personnel this fiscal year, and each of the new hires is required to pass a pre-employment physical with our town physician. In addition to the town physician, physical police and fire recruits must go through extensive testing at Harrington Hospital. These police and fire tests run about $1,300 bucks. This fiscal year, we've hired three policemen and three firemen. This account was funded with $7,100 for fiscal year eighteen. The amount was not enough to cover the expenses of advertising and physicals that come with the hiring of personnel attached to our positions that were filled this fiscal year. And it's a town planner, DPW worker, animal control officer, curbside monitor, assistant town accountant, code enforcer, dispatcher, police, collector's office, and three policemen and three firemen. Right now, we have about $4,300 in bills outstanding.
I don't recall getting that memo.
I just got it today, because I asked about it, because I didn't see it and don't remember subcommittee. So, I was told that Cheryl talked to somebody to add it to the agenda, or, I'm sorry, Karen must have added it with, I thought, the council chair to the agenda. That's why I was surprised, because I don't think this ever went through subcommittee. So, I was a little shocked to myself how it got to the agenda. But I assume the conversation must have been between you and the finance director.
We should be shocked. You should never be shocked. Just my opinion. Okay. Interesting. I don't have a problem with bringing transfers up directly, but I don't know why this particular transfer's...
I was told that the reason it was directed from Karen directly to you is because I was away at the conference that those days when it came up. That was why it was explained it went. Because that's why I didn't know about it.
But we didn't have the memo like that.
I just asked for it, because I wanted an explanation of what it was, because I wasn't part of the discussion. It was between Karen and I was told you, but I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Very good. All right. Any other discussion? I have no problem with the issue, but go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to ask what this was about, because I didn't see that either. But if it was on the agenda, shouldn't something have been in our packet?
Well, again, that was what I questioned when I reviewed the agenda, because I didn't know what it was. Again, I wasn't here, so I was told that Karen had talked to Denise about adding it to the packet. And it's a real... My understanding is that they have to... It's just part of the bills of hiring these new employees, they have to pay these physical exams and stuff. So, that's why I asked for the memo today, because I wanted to make sure I understood what the issue was.
So, you just reviewed the agenda today?
I just got this one today, is when I saw this one. I didn't catch it in my first review of the agenda, but I caught it in the second one. Well, why is this here? And that's why I checked it.
Is there an account number, Madam Chair, that this should go to, that we should have on the agenda?
No, we don't need an account number. It's Town Council Reserve. That's not an issue. I'll point out, though, if this...
Reserve to Recruitment and Processing. It's from Town Council Reserve to Recruitment and Processing. So...
Yeah, but we've discussed how transfers don't necessarily need to be the account numbers, because Karen keeps track of all the account numbers. So, that's not an issue. It's just where they're coming from and where they're going to. So... I'm actually kind of surprised. Well, it's over five, right?
Yeah.
Slipped mine. Slipped by me. There was a lot of numbers. Okay.
Yeah. Does this need to be done tonight? Can it be done at our next meeting, so we can have a better chance?
Outstanding bills, that's why Cheryl wants to do it, because as I said, there's $4,300 in outstanding bills. So, I'm sure they don't want to have late payments. That's why they're asking to do it now.
Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I don't remember discussing it in subcommittee, but the whole recruitment topic may have come across in an email last week or something. It rings a bell in my mind. So, I don't want to delay it if we have undue bills. We don't need late fees. We don't need complications for the office. I'd rather just carry on with it. It's a transfer. It does require council approval, of course. As long as we understand what we're doing, I don't see any reason to delay. Thank you.
I agree with you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Steves?
Just one quick comment. Can you email that to everybody?
Sure. I got it. She actually gave it to me in hard copy in my packet when I came to the office. I'll do it tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Matter of fact, I should have my copy.
It's fine. You can just email it. It's got to be electronic, I'm assuming, anyway.
More discussion? Counselor DePietro?
Just very quickly, Madam Chairman, it's an awful general term. What's one, maybe two items that the town manager could throw out to us that this would be spent on? Recruitment as in...
Well, he just mentioned... He read the memo, Counselor DePietro, but you just don't have it to go by.
Health testing, things like that.
It's health. Because we had a number of hires, they've replaced some personnel. The new hires require pre-employment physicals with our physician. And, let's see, police and fire recruits go through extensive testing at the hospital. Some of the tests generally run on the police and fire, $1,300 apiece. So, because they've had a number of... They've hired three policemen and three firemen this year. So, that's added additional costs that they didn't anticipate, along with the planner, the DPW last year, you know, the planner, the DPW last year, you know, the planner, the DPW, the animal control officers, the curbside monitors. There's a whole list of people that are, have had to have addition, more, more medical oversight than, screening than normal.
I get that, Madam Chair, and thank you for clarifying that. I thought this was for future. I didn't realize it was for that particular. Okay.
Right. The account was funded with $7,100 for the FY 18 budget, but it was not enough to cover it because of all the new hires. And especially police and fire, the costs are much more, much higher than a standard employee physical.
Thank you.
Okay. He'll get everyone the memo. Okay, anyone else? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous motion carries. 42, vote to ratify the contract between the town of Southbridge and Borges Construction Inc. in the amount of $286,857.70 for the Moon and Laurel Street Drainage reallocate, relocation project. Funding for this project is from the Mass Works grant previously accepted by council.
So moved.
Discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous motion carries. 43, vote to appropriate the sum of $20,955.85 from water retained earnings to allocate to the town of Charlton its share of the FY 17 annual earning per the intermunicipal agreement with $3,230.74 being retained by Southbridge for outstanding non-payment of FY 17 water bills and payments to the town of Charlton the remaining balance of
So moved. Second.
Okay, questions on this item? All those in favor? Unanimous motion carries. 44, vote to accept a donation from the Southbridge Credit Union in the amount of $1,200 for the purchase and delivery of a live Christmas/holiday tree to the town common.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion on this? I just want to put out a great big thank you to Kate Alexander and the entire team at the credit union who are willing to step up and notice that the town common was missing some of our fir trees and really wanted to do something nice for the community and were willing to provide these funds which will produce about a 14 to 16-foot Christmas/holiday tree, Norway spruce, let's go with that, Norway spruce. And it will be planted somewhere in the location of the opposite, the other firs that were cut down to be adorned by lights and rededicated to Rudy. And again, it's, it's community activities like this, it's a wonderful, the ability to have businesses who are willing to step up and do something nice for the community and make donations like this that really makes a difference, and I thank the bank for that and look forward to getting that tree in-house. The DPW will be taking it upon themselves to get the tree planted and established to keep the costs down. So, if there's any questions on that regard? All right, none? All those in favor? Unanimous, eight motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I think we need to reconsider item number 43 because it occurred to me, glanced at the numbers and went, there's a misprint there. That should, it should be $15,725, it should be $17,725, according to the, according to the memo we have in our packet.
Let me just grab that and, and just doing the math, right, 3,000, yeah, 17,725, there was a typo. Do we want to?
So moved, reconsider.
Yeah, a motion to reconsider the vote taken on item number 43.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of reconsidering? Okay, unanimous. I'm going to, I'd like a motion to amend item 43 to, with, to insert the exact, the proper amount of $17,725.11.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so this is on the amendment to motion.
Well, we don't need to amend the motion, we're just making the motion as $17,725.11.
Do you want to do that one?
Yes, that'll be easier.
Okay, Counselor Claire, would you like to?
Don't we need to vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion with, as amended?
That's what I, that's what I'm looking to do. Counselor Steves thinks we should just read it, but I believe we should.
Let's, yeah, let's do that.
Whatever.
I was going to, thank you.
Doesn't matter to me.
So, do we just get it? I'm sorry. Motion to amend to include the $17,725.11.
So moved, yes.
We already had a.
Okay, that's what I thought we did, I just wanted to make sure we're still clear. Okay. So, all in favor of the amended motion? It's unanimous, so I will reread. Vote to appropriate the sum of $20,955.85 from water retained earnings to allocate to the town of Southbridge its share of the FY 17.
Allocate to the town of Charlton.
Sorry, gosh.
It's one of those days.
Yeah, it is, well, it's at the end of 40-something motions. Vote to appropriate the sum of $20,955.85 from water retained earnings to allocate to the town of Charlton its share of the FY 17 annual earning per the intermunicipal agreement with $3,230.74 being retained by Southbridge for outstanding non-payment of FY 17 water bills and payments to the town of Charlton the remaining balance of $17,725.11.
And 11 cents, yes.
Second.
Okay, more discussion. Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, probably to the town manager. Can I ask why the non-payment, the $3,230.74?
Outstanding water bills, it's Charlton's responsibility to collect those outstanding water bills, not ours, so we hold the money until they collect it and we charge them back and then they collect it. Now, all the water bills is, am I correct, that are charged for the town residents, they have the obligation to make sure they're all paid, and when they're not paid, we can credit that from the money we have.
So, are we getting the interest on that?
I'm sorry?
Are we getting the interest of the fees? Are there any fees associated with that?
Do we get interest on that?
I mean, because we're charging our residents fees.
So, those charges that we're withholding?
Did include the interest up to that time that they actually took over the lien. So, yes, we did get insurance and fees on that, it was calculated into the amount. At this point, those have been leaned by Charlton, those are Charlton bills, we're just rectifying the math at this point for FY 17.
Okay, thank you.
So, this was put in place at the end of any, before any payment, we had the ability to hold the money that was owed to us without, from outstanding liens. If you recall, in that agreement, at the end of each year, Charlton had a right to retain a little bit of the money of our retained earnings that we had leftovers, very small percentage, to help with their own infrastructure-type items. And that's one of the reasons we do the vote we did on moving money over so that we always know exactly what was for each year and that Charlton can't try to take our compounded interest of years of, on our retained earnings and even ask for more. It's based on that particular year. So, in this case, this is the amount of money, the full amount, the $20,000 and change, but one of the most important thing was that why should we lean, why should we try to collect money from delinquent bills? That's Charlton's responsibility. So, we just say, here's, here's all you're getting, we keep the money and it's up to them to collect that extra. If they never get it, they never get it. But we have our own, you know, people, you know, we have our own issues, we don't need to have Charlton's.
Right, no, I get it, yep.
Okay, does that work? Counselor Nash.
Madam Chair, while the director's still at the podium, through you, please. It's in the same vein, I appreciate Heather's response to me this week, but it came up once again, so I'd love to point out that the director's able to answer this question, and I'd like her to, if you don't mind. Do residents of Charlton pay the same rates for their water as the residents of the town of Southbridge?
They absolutely do, they pay exactly the same rates that we pay.
Thank you. I did a little investigation, the town of Charlton has a memo from 2015 on its website with 2016 rates. That's what people are seeing and that's why the questions are coming our way. But thank you for being so open and quick to respond to my inquiry. Thank you.
To your point, Counselor, I think Charlton should change their, update their website.
Yep, they should.
Okay, Counselor Steves.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out that this was an issue at the DPW meeting, and I just wanted to point out that the way it's calculated is that it's a, it's a ratio of the percentage of the Charlton residents on the water system compared to the total residents in the water system, which came out to 8.88 percent.
Okay. All right, anything else on this? All right, and?
We still got a vote.
Right, yeah, no, I'm just looking at it because it's an appropriation, you know, I think I'll do a roll call on this this time around, I thought about that after last time. Sense appropriation. Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so we've now disposed of 43.
We did 44 as well.
And we, yes, it's okay, Counselor Steves, I really enjoy having help, I do. All right, we are at 45, Counselors' forum, and we will start with Counselor DePietro. You this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quickly plead to all our citizens who are registered to do so, it is your right, it's your duty. Go vote. Please, please, please. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Let's go men tonight. Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you.
It's been done before.
I'm looking at my phone simply because I didn't take notes before the meeting and I needed my calendar to remind at least the members of the council, if you didn't get the memo, I think it was an email form, that there is a Flag Day event this Thursday, the 14th, at 9:15 at Charlton Street School, I'm going to attend that. I hope other councilors will join me, had a great time there last week at another occasion, and Principal Masonette and others were very, very hospitable and had a lot of fun. I'll look forward to this. Also, this Saturday, the 16th, Dexter Russell's 200th, I'll be attending that. I know we had a presentation a week ago.
Okay, and it's an invite.
It's an invite only.
Yeah, so, that's, yeah.
They've advertised it.
I was sending you a parking memo on that, just so you know.
Sure.
It just came in.
And what's more, I'd like to echo what Counselor DePietro said, thank you to everyone who is willing to and exercises their right to vote tomorrow. Our municipal election is typically not well-attended, but I hope that changes, and I look forward to seeing folks down on Chestnut Street tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the men on this side. Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would also like to ask our citizens to please go out and vote tomorrow and also let the town manager know that this weekend I have noticed a few families upset because of the removal of brick fences in the cemetery. No one has reached out yet, but I've seen some heat on social media, so just to let you know, give you a heads up in case someone decides to call or, thank you.
Just pointing out, Counselor Morales, that in our full regulations for the, for the cemeteries and what we do, as you know, some is posted, but the full regulations are available on the website, so, and I believe they are in Spanish as well on the website, so I would encourage us to, you know, get as much information and help those who are questioning, perhaps. Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, I just, two things this evening, I want to give a huge thank you to our Southbridge DPW, which last week I brought out a concern in regards to the Southbridge Little League fields on Henry Street, and the very next day Heather and her team went out, and I can tell you that the team was ecstatic. I can also tell you that they are hosting playoff games this week. They, our younger division is completely undefeated, and then the older division girls only lost one game, but they were able to clinch their first-place seeding on what looked like a brand-new field. So, thank you, the Southbridge Little League thanks you guys, and I just want to thank you for the very quick response to the field. And like many councilors have said, tomorrow's election day, get out to vote. Thank you.
Counselor O'Clare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just had two things. So, I had received, I think, or I was copied on an email from Ann Bynema about, it actually came up tonight, where we've gotten into the habit of voting on amendments and then having that vote carry on as if it was a vote on the original motion. So, we've left, and I went back and I looked and we didn't, it's as much my fault as anybody else's because it was my amendment to the motion. So, I don't know what to do about the previous ones, but I'm glad that tonight, you know, we made the motion to amend, voted on the amendment, and then voted on the original motion as amended, and I think that we should just be a little bit more cognizant of that. And the only other thing that I have is just to get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
I would comment, just that I know a number of times people remove their motions, so I'm not sure if maybe some of that has happened because I generally were pretty good about, you have to amend, you take a vote, and then you vote on the main motion as amended than the standard.
Last, last week, we, last week, we, it was, it was my amendment for the Henry Street, yeah. Yeah, we voted on it as if.
I think we were so animated with that particular, I apologize for that, but thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it came up tonight, so I figured I'd at least mention it and thank her to.
Absolutely. Hey, we all have to stand our toes, you know, and certainly any time that someone can catch whoever's up here in terms of that, they should let them know. Thank you. And Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to thank the councilors up here that I've served with. I know, Counselor Clemmons, this is going to be your last term for a year. I know, not tonight, but tomorrow's voting. I mean, I might not be here for the next meeting, who knows? So, I want to thank you for your, all your service. I want to thank Counselor Carrasco and Counselor O'Clare for their service and wish them well tomorrow on the election, and all those who took out papers in our running, I wish them well, and tomorrow's too. The vote tomorrow, polls open at 7:00, they close at 8:00, am I correct on saying that? And it is, it's your right to vote. The, our constitution, the Bill of Rights, it's been amended like six or seven times in, six, six times, I believe, just on voting alone. So, you know, it's been fought for you to vote. And, you know, you think that your vote may be more in the national election or the state election, but it counts more for local. That's what affects you the most, is your local government, and then it branches off from there. So, if you don't think that your vote doesn't count in the town election, you're wrong, one vote counts, so get out there and vote, please. Thank you. That's it. And it's not going to rain.
Yes.
That's important. It's not going to rain.
Okay, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just to dovetail over what Counselor Manna just said, to follow up on about the importance of elections, just remember at the local level, there have been a few cases in, in town history in recent years where elections were decided by only one or two votes. So, that, it does really matter. So, please, go out and vote. And, let's see, also, this weekend is Relay for Life over at McManfield, so you might want to go check that out and see what's going on down there. And other than that, that was, that's all I had for.
It starts Friday, yeah?
Yes, Friday is it?
It starts Friday at 6:00 and runs through like noon on Saturday. Yep. And other than that, we have, the next meeting is supposed to be Thursday. Are we doing it 6:30 or 7:00? It hasn't been posted yet.
We haven't posted 6:00, 6:30, what time would people like for Council to hold?
Either, doesn't matter to me.
Do you have preference?
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Can we do 6:00? Is that, all right, then let's shoot for 6:00 if that works, because I know that we have the attorney coming in for what will be termed as a special meeting, and we'll probably post that at 7:00, and that will be for the Mealing Solar Agenda item and anything else that could possibly come up before we post tomorrow. But, just a lot of meetings to get things done.
And to add to that list also, next Wednesday, again, this was a reminder, next Wednesday, the 20th, at 6:30, we're doing a public forum between the planning board and the council here over the zoning changes, and there's a whole bunch of them, so it's, it's kind of wonky, but it's also really important in how, we want to, kind of want to get an idea of what people want the town to look like. This isn't technically a public hearing, the public hearing itself will be, I think it's in September sometime, I'm not sure exactly what the date is yet, but over the[1652.83]